So, good evening, everybody. The November 4th Planning Commission meeting. We now have enough members present to constitute a quorum. We have others that will join us. One person that's not joining us tonight is Dave Visentainer, who will be elected as the new chairman last week. This evening Susan, who has done that for a long time. So, we need to elect a chairman for the evening, which will need to be one of our citizen members. So, if somebody would be kind enough to look around and make a suggestion as to maybe a citizen member that might be...
I have no doubt that Dan Jay should be the chair. So, I'd like to move that.
Since he's already sitting in his chair.
Your confidence overwhelms.
Should we have a vote?
Can we have a second?
Yeah, it was that going by Richard Bradley.
Oh, I didn't hear. All right, let's do a roll call. Alderwoman Crusen?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
So, Dan can put his hand up. Let me make a couple of commentaries about tonight's meeting. Is both Dan and Ted are long-serving members of the Planning Commission, as was Susan. Susan has retired as of the last meeting, and we had a little swerve to remind ourselves of the great service that Ivy Pinkston did for the Planning Commission, and the celebrates Susan's and actually Dan's and Ted's long-term membership of the Planning Commission last week, or last month. You know, there are some things that you can't necessarily repeat, but tonight, after the Planning Commission, there'll be a gathering at the We Gap Bar and Grill, which is in walking distance for Dan to be home from safely. But we'll ask Dan and Ted to join me, and I'll buy around. Anybody's welcome to join us. It's about two blocks north of Lyndle on Boyd. And so, that would be today. So, we're welcome to do that. Second is, there are really three action items tonight that we'll go through in a minute. And the national item is a big one in that it comes out from actually a concern of Commissioner Powers, Powers, sorry, from a time ago about in our updating of the Strategic Land Use Plan Act, which we do on an annual basis, near close to annual basis. But this year, we're going to take a little extra emphasis in looking at the categories that are in the opportunity area category. So, those have been there for the most part since the beginning. We changed a few. Dick's going to lead us through a little bit of a methodology that we're going to do that with. It's got a PowerPoint. It has visuals. We may, at that point, try to do that in a row at a brisk pace because we're not going to take an action. We'll be back in an action. And if we need to go at a brisk pace, what we'll do is that we'll send you all the PowerPoint that Dick has prepared to help you get refreshed by the time we take that item up. So, take up individual items related to that information. Any questions about that? Okay. Dan, the floor is your order. Paul's the order, and ask for the order.
Use the hammer. First item will be approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion? Motion, verse 7.
Second.
We'll have to make a new roll call vote.
Alderwoman Crusen?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
I'm staying out there.
Commissioner Spade?
Upset.
Commissioner Boaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven votes in favor and two abstentions.
Action item number three. Is it in order?
We're in order, and I'm doing this one. We've been asking the Planning Commission to tee up over the last month a number of sessions where we would make a presentation and conduct a public hearing on a planning activity, and this is what we're asking for tonight. Again, it's the North Riverfront and Open Space Redevelopment Plan. It's been consummated in a lot of work with the community and our sisters that have been working on this, meaning it's really a project of Great Rivers Greenway in partnership with the city and paid for in part by SLDC. But the city primary partners were SLDC and PDA, along with Great Rivers Greenway. It's what's reflected in the boards that are in our foyer, which was the result of the last public meeting that we had on this as a team. We're now, during the course of the fall, going to those various jurisdictions and taking it through an approval and adoption process. We'd like to do that with the Planning Commission, meaning we've adopted it as a topical plan. And the purpose of this was for our North Riverfront from the E Bridge up to the Stan Veterans Memorial Bridge, Veterans Memorial Bridge for that geography. As I say, much of the work was completed with the public and a bunch of stakeholders early in the fall, and we're bringing it to you at the December 4th meeting, December 2nd meeting, excuse me. So, we're not taking any action on it as a plan tonight. It's simply another one of those situations where I'm asking your permission that at a future meeting, and I'll tell you it will be the December 2nd meeting, that we can do the proper notices for a public hearing and conduct a public hearing and a presentation on December 2nd. So, I seek your approval to do that.
Do I hear a motion to approve the, bring this to December 2nd?
So moved.
Need any better wording?
No, but I guess you want to vote. Yes.
Was there a call for the previous one?
Objection.
I withdraw that.
So, David, you're on.
Yes, Alderwoman Crusen?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Boa?
Aye.
Commissioner Allen?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
So, we now move on to a petition for rezoning, and Dick will conduct us with this one. This is a petition, so the petitioner is here, a colleague of ours, represented by Otis and his team at LCR, who's the property owner. So, to integrate that there'll be reasonable things that you might ask of Otis. He'll make a presentation, which we've embedded in our PowerPoint. So, Dick will do the general stuff. There'll be a chance for Otis to make a presentation about it. Dick will need to do a few cleanup tasks, and then we'll take our actions. Obviously, you're welcome to ask Otis questions when he makes his presentation, but we will, again, also have a couple of tasks to do on our own after that, and then there'll also be open for questions. So, with that, I'll move on to Dick.
Good evening. This is a site, the Prudigo site. We've seen quite a bit this year. It's a 34.6 acre site. There's two parcels, 23 inter-Cass and 2311 Carr. And then there's a small Ameren electric substation in the middle. That's the third parcel. And of course, it's on the southeast corner of North Jefferson and Cass, and it's in the Carr Square neighborhood. And the expectation is that the site will be subdivided for office uses, retail, hospital, hotel, and restaurant uses. So, a mix of uses. The rezoning sought in the petition is to the G, local commercial and office district. That eliminates the dual zoning. And you can see, right now, it's partially D. That's the substation. And then, the other two parcels are dual parcels. They're E and G. So, it's cleaning it up, getting rid of the dual zoning, so that it's all G, and it also allows the proposed mixed-use development project. Think back to February, those that were on the commission then. This was the red boundary, was the Chapter 99 boundary, and I think it's the longest redevelopment. It's the Cass Avenue, Jefferson Avenue, Parnell Street, Montgomery Street, our 22nd chapter. It's already an ordinance, and the north portion of the site is the NGA site, and the south part is the rezoning area. And you can see that it's almost completely forested. In February, there was three resolutions related to the NGA. Now, the Prudigo site is being rezoned to allow the mixed-use opportunities. That was proposed in the Strategic Land Use Plan after the neighbor of the Fifth Ward. The zoning administrator and PDA staff both recommended the G, local commercial and office district. If you remember back to February, we were talking about H district for kind of the whole area. And the G district is more appropriate because it limits height to three stories or 50 feet. And NGA has a preference, expressed preference at the surrounding areas not be tall buildings. The H district would allow eight-story or 100-foot tall buildings. So, they're both mixed uses, and it's just more appropriate for the rezoning. Also, in the background, we discussed the Missouri Department of Natural Resources determination that the site doesn't pose any unacceptable risk to human health and environment. And that's all based on assuming that appropriate land uses are ensured. And there's an environmental covenant that says you do not use the domestic use of land or any such in the city. Natural uses, mixed uses, and not that we look at. The photos, the thing is from February, and there's still a lot of trees on the site. Different corners. This is the main intersection of Cass. This is the eastern corner. This is also on the east side of the arch. There's State St. Thomas Church. And the northwest, southwest corner is adjacent to the two Gateway School. The zoning petition area, you can see, back in the 20s when we adopted zoning, commercial along main criterials, and residential back behind. Prudigo Housing Development was still. Did not change the zone.
Otis Williams, executive director of SLDC, LCR, LRA, BIE, a whole bunch of those, but tonight in his capacity as the petitioner, LCR owns the property.
Thank you. I think I've talked about this project, the whole NGA and Prudigo combination many, many times. So, I'm pleased to be here tonight to secure approval for our recommendation, actually, for rezoning of that area. And so, this is a signature view that we've been using for the NGA site, looking back toward downtown. It is not the approved version from the NGA, but more a conceptual one for us to be able to show the NGA that we could get all of the things that they were requiring for the site, on the site, and allow for the distance from the perimeter and the associated requirements that they have. So, this one works for us. This is the Prudigo site, which is just south of the 100-acre site. And while I show you this site plan, it does not mean that this is exactly what would be built, but this is a view of what we were petitioning for, for these kinds of things to be able to occur on the site. We do have some approved projects from the developer that would work on this site, and the hospital and medical support areas to the south end of the parcel, and a mix of uses along the northern edge of the parcel and the eastern edge. So, the idea is to provide for the development of the site. These are, this is a view, our vision, if you will, working with our consultant, in this case, Civitop, to look at what could happen on this site, particularly if we had interior streets that were lacing this site. And so, just to give you a perspective of the identity that might be on the site. The, we're looking at the form and the mapping that is there and the kind of material that we think we might be looking at for the rezoning. Again, this is why we're doing this. The NGA has indicated to us that we need to be able to deliver the site according to requirements, ones that we've even seen on, and that we are able to deliver the site free of major renovation, and that we have vacated all of the streets, and that we remove debris, and also that we will provide a clean site. In addition to that, they are concerned about what activities are planned or will occur outside of this site. And so, this is why we are petitioning to support this major 34, 35 acre site to ensure that plans can be implemented on this site. We're continuing to work all around this site, but essentially, this is a summary of what the NGA site is and the impact that we think it will have with the neighboring locations around it. When we first presented this before the commission, the average salary that we were working with was $75,000 per person, and that number, more recently, we received from the NGA is up to $83,000 over time. And so, it has a major impact, will have a major impact on our earnings tax revenue if we should lose the NGA. This, again, is another view of what could happen. Again, it's not necessarily what will be, but this is reestablishing the grid, if you will, and this is at Cass and 23rd as a possibility. And again, the 23rd street design. The, I mentioned the urgent care facility, and this is located along Jefferson Avenue on the southeast, I'm sorry, southwest corner of the site. And it is a three-bed hospital that has already been approved, a certificate of need has already been approved. And then, we've talked to the operator of this facility as well, and we feel confident that it will be constructed. But this is the beginning. And then, around this would be supporting clinics and other things that would happen. So, this is the southeast corner, the southwest corner, sorry. Just a pictorial. This is not the image of what they intend to build, but just, I call it a placeholder to show what will be. So, I'm open to answer any questions that might have.
Well, we can bring Dick back to do some of the questions that we'll have you in actions, and then open it up for questions again.
Otis, I have a question. I was wondering if you could just address. So, NRA is still, I mean, NGA is still questionable.
Okay, so I saw that we passed it in one of the slides. We are still one of four sites that are under consideration. And I'd like to thank community who attended the public meeting that was just held on the 29th of October. And they held public meetings, all of the remaining sites are in competition. And so, four sites. There were three public meetings held, one in St. Louis County, one in St. Louis City, and one near Scott Airport. And so, there's a public comment period that is still open until the 23rd of November. And I encourage anyone who hasn't already, and if you have, if you have a different view of the street, you can leave your comments or mail to the address that is there. So, the decision will not actually be made until next March, April timeframe. And at that point, if we are the selected entity, then we have a year, basically, to get all of the tasks done that we have to do. So, construction is dependent upon appropriations, obviously, but the current plan, and it seems to be working through all of the congressional committees, that it would happen in the 2017 calendar year.
Okay, so, the question I guess then is, this is the zoning change.
This is a zoning change in order to facilitate redevelopment around this site. And this would need to happen whether or not NGA...
Well, that's my question. It's a good idea either way. Can you address that a little bit?
About the shrinkage on the site. The NGA has made the decision to be entirely closed.
Right, so originally, our development area, 100 acres is north of Cass and also the area that is Prudigo. And so, they made the formal decision, in fact, that all of their apartments should be met north of Cass. And the, I think your question is, what will... The areas that is Prudigo, we always have had a plan to try and redevelop that area. And some of the activity that we currently have being placed on Prudigo was actually envisioned as being integrated on the site. So, we've made some modifications and some changes based on the NGA decision. But all around the site, I mean, we're talking with the Housing Investment Trust, the developers, with the Housing Investment Trust. And then, we had a major letter from Mr. Trumpka, who is the president and CEO of AFL-CI. So, they have a major interest in funding companies through other areas of the redevelopment area. And we have other activity that we think is near a funding resolution as well. This is just, the Prudigo piece is just a key to trying to ensure that the area that's just south of the NGA is, in fact, we can report back to the NGA that we have that ready for redevelopment as well.
Is the zoning to G, wouldn't you want even more flexibility? Or do you feel that that's enough flexibility?
I think, based on our discussions with zoning professionals, they recommend that they think, based on what we're trying to get done, that that would be the adequate level.
I just didn't have a PUD or something that had even more kind of open...
It sort of works the other way. The letter grade has the greater flexibility than something like a...
Otis, I don't, I can't really see any reason that this Prudigo rezoning needs to be done now. I mean, it's zoned G and D. The NGA doesn't want a tall building there, well, neither one of those zones would allow for that. I don't necessarily oppose it, but I'm just, what I'm thinking is that this, we're going to create some value in this site by rezoning it all to G, because the next guy won't have to do it. And the next guy who owns this is going to be Paul McKee. And so, we're kind of creating some value there for him. Have I hit on something here, or I'm just...
No, what our goal is, is that we need to, we need to get some activity started, and we have something that's ready to go. And so, the banking community is, before we can fund this, needs to have some certainty on, I said certainty, we need to have it zoned such that they can then finance it. And so, that's why we're moving ahead with it. And so, if we, if it was, I know that there's this stigma with Paul, but we have all these things that are queued up that are ready to go. And it would make a huge statement, of course, to be able to pull the trigger financially with the funding sources to be able to get some of those things actually started. This is one of those activities in the process.
So, the now is because those are ready to go regardless?
Right.
The three-bed hospitals are in clinic sites. Who is the operator on that?
There's a gentleman that we talked to maybe five or six years ago who was trying to do something in the...
The Vail neighborhood.
And we weren't able to get it done. And so, he moved away, moved his activity to Puerto Rico, and actually, got it done because, and the reason we didn't get it done, that was some, I'll leave it all.
Who knows?
Yeah, we just couldn't get it done. And so, because there was opposition or we weren't able to get it done, he actually went to and did it. And he's proved this principle, this idea, and he wants to come back to this area. And the developer sought him out and was able to get him prepared back. So, he came in, and he's actually in a position that he started running, it's Harlem, I believe, facility in Harlem. He moved and did something in Puerto Rico in another very low-income neighborhood. And so, he came then to present, I can't think of his name.
That's okay, I don't know.
But we did talk with him and people that are supporting him.
Okay, thank you.
Other question? Let's let Dick do the concluding.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have to show you another map before you enter. This is the Strategic Land Use Plan, Opportunity Area. And the city's Opportunity Area, the SLOE, and the neighborhood calls for mixed uses. This proposed rezoning is in conformity with both of those plans. The zoning administrator has recommended it for several reasons. Part of it is to get rid of the dual zone and have it so that it allows the intended future uses. PDA staff recommends approval of this rezoning.
And you heard something buried in there that we say so often, that it's a parcel that has a dual zoning on it. And actually, this is a huge piece of land with three total parcels, and they're not cut up with the way that matches the zoning and matches the future cutting. So, the dual zoning of those parcels is something that interferes with the subdivision process.
So, I just wanted to speak up because I am going to be voting no, and I probably will, on this project several times, and I want the commissioners to be aware of why I'm doing that. I'm an urban planner, and I happen, my father and his family happened to live at Prudigo. So, I feel very passionately about whatever development happening here really reflecting the historical and cultural significance. And I don't feel like I see that. And so, for the, you know, unless I see that, I'm probably going to be voting no.
How are you, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So, I think what I would have liked to have happened is that that cultural, that local and national significance of what happened there, I would have liked that there was a vision put forward for that being really important. So, whatever development happens here needs to reflect that in some way. You know, looking at these renderings, I know, Otis, you were saying it may not exactly look like that, but what the pictures show is like what looks like good mixed-use development. It's not that what could happen... It's not that what could happen there may not be a good form for the site, not that it couldn't provide economic benefits for the neighborhood. It's really more of that cultural and social type of things that that would not be acknowledged in any way through the development, so.
So, you're looking more for historical references, recognition of, rather than building form that echoes anything?
Yeah, I mean, I really, you know, the city has its economic development needs, and not that I'm, I'm not saying that that can't be satisfied on the site, but through whatever happens there, yes, I think that historical significance should be reflected and...
How would you ever see that, though, in a planning process? I mean, at this zoning level, because typically, you wouldn't see that level of detail out of planning and zoning.
Yeah, I mean, I can't...
At a physical point in time.
Right. And so, it's, it's just my, even though we're only looking at a zoning change, and that has nothing to do, like with what you're saying, with the design of whatever structures are there, or, I think it should be there. And so, it's hard for me to vote for something that will progress and end products that I don't agree with.
Well, I think it's important for you to articulate that, because, and I apologize for pulling more of an app, but I think it's, I think it's a very important point, and one of the reasons we tend to pick. And it is just a zoning change, but as you go with your conscience.
Exactly.
But, thank you for...
So, yeah. So, during the course of this process, the, when we get to that point where we are approving architectural plans and uses and that kind of thing, that does, and it will come back to both, to LCRA for sure, and I think to a degree to PDA, for us to take a look, and we can be very sensitive to those kinds of things that you're concerned about. But we are at that level now, where we're just really just talking about the zoning and not at a design level.
Could we find a way to add that in minutes?
Sure.
For their concern. Ready for motion?
Don, do you expect this? We'll come back to the planning commission?
Not to the planning commission.
Oh, okay. I got it.
Move to a fruit.
Second. Further discussion. We already know Kane's previous role, so please...
Thanks a lot, Jennifer.
Alderwoman Crusen.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
Commissioner Boaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
No.
And the motion passes with all but one present voting yes.
Well, thank you, members of the commission. Thank you, Otis and his team for being here. And thank you, Jennifer, for making those comments. So, Dick talked about February 4th, we had some heavy-duty actions to do with creating the redevelopment plan for LCRA, the strategic plan, had a public hearing with residents from the neighborhood. Also in February, as part of African Black History Month, we showed at lunchtime for staff, Prudigo the Myth, the movie. And it's a powerful, powerful movie, if you haven't seen it, that does a number of things. And one is, it reminds us of a past not to be proud of in many ways, because it talks about a failed housing project. It talks about some things that happened in this community. When I talk about the community, I now mean about the region. That's almost shocking, what is shocking, I'm a newcomer, and relatively, as to, boy, that type of activity and occurrence wasn't from 1886, it was in the lifetime of many of the people in the room that were viewing it. And so, they would remember, wow, the, first the positive, and then the negative. And then, younger people in the room would just be surprised that, boy, those things happened in our community, both the issues of white flight and the formation of small communities around the, around the city perimeter was pretty moving. I have a copy, I'll loan it to anybody, and it's, it's pretty powerful. Goes to all the things that Jennifer said about that site and our history too.
Don, I agree with everything that you just said, aside from the newcomer comment. You can only use that so often.
So many more times, Eric, you've been here. Why, two more chips on that.
Yeah, shoot, I tried, tried to slip that in, yes. As my seventeen-year-old son goes to Metro High School.
Chapter 99.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a chapter 99 redevelopment plan for, lighting study redevelopment plan for the addresses shown above on North Main Boulevard and Page Boulevard. The site is almost three acres in size, it's just eighteen parcels, and is located at the southwest corner of North Main Boulevard and Page Boulevard, a major intersection in the city, in the covenant loop and residential neighborhood. The existing uses on the site are a gas station, a motel, parking lot, four residential buildings, and several vacant lots. And unlike most redevelopment plans that the planning commission sees, whether the prospective developer and the development project lined up and ready to go, this is not one of those particular projects. The purpose of this redevelopment plan is to blight the site initially, and then, through the redevelopment plan, to provide a framework, to issue a request for proposals to attract a developer or potential multiple developers to implement a mixed-use development project for this particular site. The redevelopment plan was initiated by the Land Clearance Recovery Development Authority, represented by Otis and Michael Griffin, and that was done at the request of Alderwoman Marlene Davis, who is the Alderwoman of the National Forest. This is a aerial photo of the site, to remind you, the redevelopment area goes along Grand and along Page, includes a vacant lot, a couple of residential buildings, a large vacant lot, this is a BP gas station, the Ebony motel, a few more vacant lots, parking lot that serves an adjacent use, located outside of the redevelopment area, and a couple of residential buildings. And then, to the south of the redevelopment area is this large use, which is the Grand Manor Nursing Home, whose parking is in the redevelopment area, and some scattered vacant lots and residential buildings. Now, on the other side of Page Boulevard is Martin Luther King Plaza, which was developed ten years or so ago, in 2004. It was a major commercial project, and since then, a number of newer commercial uses have been built in the area, including the new office building for the St. Louis community, a new Walgreens, which was built a couple of years or so ago, and a Family Dollar located just off the screen. So, in a short period of time, this has become a major commercial destination on the city's north side. And I believe that Alderwoman Davis is interested in building off of that development that's currently there. These are some photos of the redevelopment area, starting off along Grand, this is a vacant lot, and actually was a, it's an abandoned parking lot for a funeral home that has since gone out of business, a couple of residential buildings, a few more vacant lots. And then, along Grand, I'm sorry, along Page Boulevard, we have the BP gas station, an Ebony motel, some additional vacant lots. This is a parking lot that is being used by the nursing home in the background on the other side of the alley, and again, a couple of residential buildings. And then, on the, in terms of the adjacent properties, on the south side of the alley is the Grand Manor, which is an attractive nursing and rehab center, well-maintained residential building, and vacant lots. As I mentioned, the MLK Plaza is located just to the north of the redevelopment area, it's anchored by a Save-A-Lot food store. You can see some of the other tenants that are included in the strip shopping center from the side on the right. And as I mentioned, a number of new commercial uses have taken advantage of the high-traffic counts along Page and Grand and Dr. Martin Luther King Drive. You have the Housing Authority on the left, which includes a PC, PNC bank branch and a Walgreens store. The city's strategic land use plan designates the eastern portion of the redevelopment area as a neighborhood commercial area, shown here in pink, and designates the western portion of the redevelopment area as a neighborhood development area. Both of these strategic land use categories are fairly broad in nature, accommodate a number of uses, and could therefore accommodate a mixed-use development project that the Alderwoman is hoping to, to happen in this area. So, the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan, does not provide for the use of eminent domain, and some property acquisition will have to take place. It does provide for the use of up to fifteen years of tax abatement, and staff is recommending approval of the redevelopment plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Michael Griffin and Otis also are available.
What type of outreach was done on the residential properties? Are the owners aware of their houses being blighted, are these rental properties?
We...
Do we send letters?
We do a posting, but I believe, so it's in the area on the western edge where...
All the homes were occupied? And who, do we have a list of the owners here? We know who owns them? Is there a majority owner?
The number of the properties along Grand are owned by Crown...
Crown Mart.
Crown Mart, exactly. I'm not sure if they own the gas station currently, but they do own a couple of these buildings here along, along Grand. In terms of Page, most of these vacant lots, as well as the parking lot, is owned by the Grand Manor Nursing Home. The motel, it's unclear as to who owns it, it's a corporate name with the address linked with that particular hotel name and address. And the residential properties, I think most of them are actually occupied. I'm not sure if their owner occupied, or renter occupied. And I don't know if it's intended that the proposed development would, is intended to take, not take, but to incorporate some of those parcels that are currently occupied by...
So, remember, in the toolbox for LCRA, they use the, we're blighting an area, defining what's wanted to be their, their mixed use, and using the toolbox to be an incentive. So, the toolbox in this case, it would use the tax abatement to be an incentive for a private developer, but it doesn't include any of that.
Right. But, how are we even processing this, this whole part of property? We're providing a continued tax abatement incentive, are we raising the value of the ca, of the land in doing so, which will be an inhibitor to redevelopment? Is value without accrued existing?
Yes, no, take the line.
Malice. This isn't a preservation review, right?
It's not a historic, I think, that's why, may not even be a preservation review. So, one of the things that, you know, we see so many things that use the chapter 99 tool, which is a single parcel or scattered parcels, where the developer has applied to do something. And mainly, they're applying to do something that gets them tax abated. In this case, LCRA is using their powers to say, here's this L-shaped area that's a hodgepodge at the moment, to say that it's blighted, we need to occur with blighting, and that they want to use their toolbox to incentivize the developer to make those private investments, to buy those houses, and get the benefit of the tax abatement to help boost that. And they would then, after the consummation of this as a redevelopment plan, seek and have an RFP for developers to do this, to work in this area.
So, the gas station's, what, a year old, maybe? Year and a half?
Don't know. Michael, do you know?
They are still going right there, don't they?
No, not that, no, still, they want to, and...
Yeah, what's going, what's going on here? Like, what's this narrative? We just picked a quarter?
Well, it is very speculative, and I wouldn't want to speak for Alderwoman Davis, but when we spoke yesterday, I think, I think her idea that it's for us to help interpret a vision that's forthcoming, she does not want the gas station there. And that's, that's pretty clear. Further west, on the other side of the Ebony motel, she's approved a strip mall, a small strip mall commercial use that will play off as the tip area of the MLK Plaza. I tried to figure out about the Ebony motel, I, she wouldn't respond to that. I...
She has a developer for the part of the land?
From part of, yeah, just to the west of the Ebony motel, there's a vacant lot that...
A lot that's shown here on the level?
That she has a developer to do a small strip mall that will kind of play off as an MLK. The Ebony motel in the citizen service bureau has, it's about, there's an encyclopedia of complaints, but I think maybe that's more that she really knows what's going on at our ward, and is, I think, possible, what's happening there. But I know that she told me the gas station, something she doesn't envision being staying on that site, so... In the case of the gas station, it's not a new gas station, it's been there for quite a while. And what makes it clear is their convenience store is like a postage stamp-sized thing, so nobody builds gas stations like that anymore. So, it's been that way for a while. While I was out taking photographs, there was a public notice sign up there, and there was a public hearing that was scheduled for the construction of a new gas station...
That's right.
...at a convenience store.
Which is Crown Mart's other location.
Yeah, and I don't know what the outcome of that conditional use permit hearing is, but again, so they're clearly interested in the gas station, and we know that they own some of the parcels, not all of the parcels along Grand. And Mike was saying, although apparently, she, the Alderwoman doesn't want to see this development going forward, and maybe that's the reason why she wants a mixed-use development and sort of a coordinated effort.
So, this wouldn't accrue then to the Crown Mart fifteen-year tax abatement, development direction, if that...
That would take a follow-up action by LCRA to do that, if they were to do that. So, it doesn't, no, it gives nobody automatically fifteen years of tax...
It's still LCRA's option to give...
Right. And LCRA also gets the authority to approve all the roaming permits in the geographic area.
So, Don, when we've done this in the past, it's usually been, I think, on LCRA proper. When we've pre-zoned it before, when we've pre-designated chapter 99 before, is that not true? That's not true.
I mean, it's a chapter 99 plan that was done a long time ago, through the loop, and then there's one for the area with some block art with now, but...
They're all privately owned.
Well, I mean, there is a mismatch, which...
So, I, we do it infrequently, because most often, it's driven by a developer who has a site that's coming in to get something. So, from my perspective, generally, when we identify an area that's blighted and need change, and we're doing it not necessarily with a developer in the wings, it's a good thing to do that in a comprehensive, multi-site way. But we do it infrequently, and occasionally, it will have land owned by LRA, and occasionally, it may have other known parties that are friendly to development, and maybe not. And so, there's a couple of good ones, I might have just mentioned the one on, in the east loop, that really was, as a redevelopment plan, was the stimulus that got the loop to come east of U-City Line, also with the metro link stop at the end. So, we don't do it often, but this is one of them.
Do we normally have the sustainability checklist to guide us in our decision on the abatements, though?
So, yes, so the...
So, without knowing what's coming, we can't do that?
So, I'll let, I want to, don't want to go too far, because I'll make an editorial comment that I'll make anyway. But often, the checklist gets to use because there's, when... when we see an applicant that has something in mind, we know what it is that they're doing, and sort of it gets rated by the sustainability checklist. So in this absence, I hope Michael can explain how that will be applied.
Well, first, we've been working with Emily from the Botanical Garden, and Don and Noel to... for a new and improved sustainability impact statement that I think plays more off of the toolbox. And I think what will happen is projects will need to commit to certain projects going forward, and then at the end, we'll have basically an affidavit that we can make sure that, you know, that they're going to certify we did what we said we were going to do. In this particular case, because it's so speculative, there really is no project. When we do a larger area like this, when the projects do come in, we review the plans individually, so we'll actually get a short application, which will have the sustainability impact statement on it. And so for that particular project, they'll fill it out, and then we'll know what's happening. But for the overall area, we... there's no way... typically, that's filled out by the applicant.
So, Michael, do we normally expect them to fill out a certain... to achieve a certain number of...
That's the new and improved, that we will be making sure that they're... because in the past, and where it is currently, there's really no teeth to... they could check every checkmark on the thing, and we wouldn't really have any way to tell that they did what they said they were going to do or what the impact was. So it'll be a way to actually aggregate numbers and be able to keep track of things in a better way.
And I mentioned my name of helping to goose an improvement to that, that also means in we're giving something here in terms of tax abatement, that there's an expectation that part of the sustainability plan would be reflected in what they do here. So it's...
You'd think you'd almost have to follow all the way down to the occupancy permit, and not get an occupancy permit until all that's been checked off.
We used to have someone review...
But they won't be... They didn't have the ability to tell them they've checked it off.
Yeah.
We used to have somebody review what happened to see if it complied with the redevelopment plan, which had a lot more in it than the current redevelopment plan.
So I'm not... I don't know how we check for compliance, but I will tell you, the different part is that, as Otis and the LCRA team knows, we're pushing to say, let's push the sustainability plan to not just be a tabulation, but an expectation that with our having that sustainability plan and the checklist of things that you could achieve, that you do achieve, so...
And the other thing, through working with Alderwoman Creusen, the idea of redevelopment agreement, currently, we only have those on project over a million dollars, and the idea is to have them on every project going forward. And it may only be a one-page thing, but that's where we can also put in stipulations about the sustainability impact statement about special business districts. And it'll be a contract that each project will be accountable for, too.
I have a question. So the guidelines in the redevelopment plan document at the end, looking at the parking regulations section on page 10, but, I mean, are those really the design guidelines that whatever development happens here, they will have to follow?
So whatever development happens has to follow what other regulations might be superposed, if it was in a historic district or the zoning. And then, in being in a redevelopment area, the redevelopment area is articulating design guidelines that when the redevelopment authority reviews the building permits, they need to follow those design guidelines.
So under parking, I mean, I know that across the street, there's surface parking right along the street, but it would seem that we shouldn't be encouraging that. We should be suggesting that parking is being behind wherever possible. I find that to be a deficiency.
This is boilerplate language. It's attached to all of them, right?
It is the... This has not been customized for this site, though.
Again, they do come back to us for review, so we get to encourage doing what you're talking about, just putting parking behind, bringing structures to the street and putting parking behind, other things that are looked at during the LCRA review.
So is... I mean, what's the mechanism to make sure that's happening? Because you just described, did it sound...
Well, they have to get the plans approved, and so we're one of those quite good advocates, and so we supervise it. And that's sometimes through the preliminary review, when they come for a permit, if it's a permit, or if they're... At some point, it's around the back end of the review.
Right. I guess my question is, so if there's no... if it's not written down somewhere, so that when you do that review of the plans, how can I feel comfortable that that conversation will be brought up and it would be suggested?
It could be incorporated in the... and I don't want to speak for Michael or Otis, it could be incorporated in the request for proposals that goes out to developers if they feel there's a need to place the parking in the rear. There's certainly an opportunity to include that.
Jennifer, I think really where this should happen should be with zoning, and, you know, that would take a more comprehensive look at the way in which we incentivize projects and how that correlates with our expectations for the design of the projects. I mean, we often have this conversation here, and we're often, unfortunately, told that it's really not our purview. I mean, we've goose a couple of projects to do better, but it's really... it doesn't fall to us. But I mean, I think many of us here would love to have that conversation at another place, so we don't have to have it here consistently.
I'll give you a slight twist to that. And I did invite everybody to have a drink afterwards, and I'll buy, and that is Otis, is what I want to say. Is that... Yes, it is. There are lots of redevelopment plans that are created each month. This is the boilerplate redevelopment for the urban design standards. It's in our purview that those design standards, if they're to be modified, need to be approved by us. And so maybe this is something that we should dust off and take a look and make sure that the standard designs, the standards at least have some up-to-date reflections to say, if such and such, one might consider X, so that it has a little bit more instruction for that review that comes down the line.
Question. So how far along are you in the development of the requests for proposals?
I don't do that.
Looking at all of them?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's just the first stage.
So is there... what's the harm in holding this off until we get more of that kind of framework put together and then re... I mean, we're not blocking anything from going forward since you don't have the RFP even thought up, since you have no idea...
I should refer to you and where you and the RFP are all along.
I could quote her, there's no hurry. we've gotten a recommendation, approval recommendation from the LCRA board. She's not in any hurry to interview this board, Alderwoman. So we're... I think in a lot of ways, she wanted this to happen so she could try to find a developer.
But customarily, you don't do the RFP... you do the RFP before you have the plan or after you have the plan?
After.
So the sequence gets to be is that you do want to have the plan, so you do the RFP.
So we can hold this a month? Is what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm just scared to say that we may not have a new... I'm just asking you, Don, because we won't have a new redevelopment plan template in the next...
What are we going to accomplish in the...
Well, I felt like I would have an opportunity... I think it's a very important corner for North St. Louis. It's a gateway to Grand Center. It's, you know, across from some really good things happening, and I think this is the first time I've had any kind of look at it. And because this area doesn't have any protection that would, you know, prevent... there's been a lot of clear-cutting of some of the historic-sensitive, I think, buildings in this area. And I'm worried that because there's no preservation review to check this, and there aren't as many balances, checks and balances like what happened in the 28th ward, since the entirety is in review, that if I had a little bit of time to talk to the Alderwoman and find out, you know, I don't care. We can vote for it now, too. It's just... it just seems like, you know, LCRA doesn't know what we're really giving tax abatement for, because you could really plop this down on almost every one of the corners from that section up to 70 on Grand, and all of them, I would say, are blighted and need help. And most of them have gas stations, fast food, bad hotels, and vacant lots, vacant buildings. So it seems like there's more information here that I'm not able to get a hold of, and I want to make sure that there are people living in these homes, that, you know, someone blighted my house and gave tax abatement and put... I see you're actually want to do something with these homes, and I just... I don't feel comfortable with it.
Well, maybe what we're uncomfortable with is, already, I hear 15-year tax abatement on a strip mall.
Right.
You know, I figure out, you know, if we're going to give 15-year tax abatement, let's set our sights higher.
Right.
Very viable businesses on the site. I don't know. I guess the motel's fine.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
It's got a nursing home right behind you.
You got a nursing home.
You got a...
And you've got, you know, a solid retail facility. But if we're going to give these 15 years of tax, what is the higher that we're aspiring to? It's not defined yet, and I think that's why we're kind of...
It does incent... I mean, if you're the Alderwoman, you're thinking about this, hopefully what you're thinking is, okay, well, this piece of property, I'm going to blight it, it's going to have the ability to get 15 years of tax abatement. That's going to be attractive for a developer, and maybe that will draw a developer there versus somewhere else.
Right.
I don't know what the Alderwoman's thinking, that if I were going to do one of these, I'd be thinking about that.
That's in fact what she is thinking. I think she's trying to incentivize getting interest into her area.
And to an important...
If you're an Alderperson, though, and you go to a developer and you want to develop an area like this, don't you just tell them, well, 100% of the time, Planning Commission approves the blighting and the tax abatement, so we know 100% of the time that we're going to get it if you decide that you're going to develop here?
You do, but...
I'm just a question.
It takes time to do that kind of thing. I don't know. I'm a little bit worried about this. I'm thinking, I have actually three of these in the 28th ward. One of them I did, it's on Olive, between the 43, 44, 45, and 46, that's all of them through there. And then two others were done before I was the Alderwoman. So, I mean, do it in the area... you don't do it everywhere. You do it in an area where you want to work on.
Did those have boilerplate language in them?
They don't. They have actually... Dan McGuire was the Alderwoman for two of them, and they're very long, and they have lots of stuff in them. Some of which, you know, you might not put in today, but, yeah.
I can make a motion, if you want me.
Yeah.
Can I just make a motion that we hold on this until our November meeting?
December meeting.
December meeting, pending any new information that we can bring back. Do I look for a second?
So we'll just make a technical... this is one of the things we have to act. Is that constitutional act that we do?
The motion to hold, you mean?
Yeah.
Did you want to make the observation about the 30 days, though?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you do, under the statute, have to respond to the recommendation request by LCRA in 30 days. But the repercussions, if you don't respond in 30 days, is that the Alderwoman can proceed with the Board of Alderman process. Since it's not going to be through the Board of Alderman, she hasn't introduced the legislation, I don't know that there's any solid repercussion there. We discussed in the past with the Board that your recommendation will still be received at the Board. So again, under the statute, you do have 30 days. It's the courtesy of the Board to accept your recommendation after that. But if it changes between now and then, is that a new proposal from LCRA? LCRA's submitted its request to you, so that's all there is.
So it could get changed, or it can be introduced at the Board of Alderman.
Right.
You know, we can pass it here, and it could get better.
Well, it sounds like we don't pass the here, it goes over there anyway.
Or it could get worse.
I withdraw my motion, and we don't have any choices to think about this longer. Just a little...
Let's say, and we have 30 days to take an action, like, for... So, and does an action of tabling extend our 30 days or not?
Uh, no. Recommendations received within the 30 days. Without the recommendations, governing body can go ahead.
So the second would be... third would be a month this week?
So, and then there was a conversation about the practical aspects in that the Alderwoman hasn't introduced it yet.
Right.
So, I guess that's practical, but doesn't make much difference, because it's still going to be of something that's... we want to influence the change of some content, I assume, or have a conversation with the Alderwoman to make sure she's properly sensitive to the idea that there's... some of this is generic and how that's going to be handled.
Here's a possibility, Don. What if we move to approve requesting that LRA, LCRA, come back with an informational notification of how this thing came down, but also with the strong recommendation that if we're going to give 15-year tax abatement, we want to tighten up the expectations of what the city's going to get, which we're giving that commission incentive. We're not totally are clear on what that is, but...
Okay. So let's... I'll translate that for David. So we get to make a recommendation from the Planning Commission. A recommendation can be up, down, or something else, right?
Up with condition.
Up with condition. It's just in conformity of the plan with the general plan for the redevelopment community hall and... I mean, yeah. It can be up, down. I don't know how you would be neutral.
No, I'm not wanting to be neutral. I want to add... I want to add condition.
Oh, well, right. You make a recommendation, yeah.
Right. So with that in mind, and what I just heard the chairman say in the discussion, is taking it up while the clock is still making our conversation and our action valid. Take it up, and there'll be a vote, but the vote is going to have some attachments of our recommendation is, in this case, affirmative with the following stipulations or recommendations. And we've done that before, so I think...
They have done that.
Right. So I think that's what's on the table, to have an action that's as binding as it is by this commission within the 30 days, and have it be distributed to the parties. It's distributed... ours is a recommendation to the Board of Alder... ours is a request of LCRA to review and make a recommendation that then is both to LCRA and to the Board of Alderman, so... So you... Under that, you're... you're starting to proceed, yeah.
Well, does somebody want to rephrase what I said, or do you want me to try to rephrase it?
Well, he's saying that we need providers...
Right.
...written down.
Yeah, right. But then we'll transmit as part of what came out of tonight.
So does that mean we have to identify what we... how we define that bar being higher?
Right. So I would suggest, one, that you have a recommendation that whoever's making it is making it in the affirmative or the negative, but I'm assuming it's going to be in the affirmative, and add to it that some concerns or stipulations, have that as clearly understood by everybody, and the second is then voted on. I would urge us to talk about, not necessarily tie it to the 15-year tax abatement. It's acknowledged that this has 15-year tax abatement. The tax abatement's not necessarily in our purview, but wanting to have something happen that's right at this part of town is, so... So somebody's making a motion... somebody is either making a motion to say, accept this, yes, say no, or accept it, and with the... either making a motion to say, accept this, yes, say no, or accept it, and with the instructions that we communicate, X, Y, and Z, to the LCR and the Board of Alderman as part of our recommendation.
Between now and it coming over, or you need all those now?
Hmm?
Those provisos, do you need them now, or we can...no?
Yeah.
No. That's the part of the motion.
Is it possible that the provisos are an updated version of the attached RFQ plan that we're referring to? That Jennifer took exception to.
I'm not sure I completely...we want to give something that who is receiving it can react to. They can choose to ignore us, by the way.
Oh, yeah.
Or it's instructive for them to do something.
Yeah, but the...so the position we're in now is that this particular motion has attached to it a document that we've used in the boilerplate for the last however many years.
Right.
It's quarter seven. It could take us till midnight to rewrite it.
Yeah, so...
So that's not going to happen.
So, right.
Because we got to drink.
We have priorities.
So two things is, don't get too hung up about boilerplate. That's sort of a more global issue. But are there some key messages from the discussion that we could take and have it be communicated back to Michael, to Dale, and to the Alderman to be thinking about as they prepare the board? I mean, remember that Michael is here with his boss behind me, so he will...he will probably know some of the nuances that we don't get into the record in this recommendation.
I mean, Michael, I'm wondering if you can...
Me, sure.
Yes, you, Michael Powers.
Yes.
If you're able to just frame the questions you would have for the Alderman. I mean, maybe then we can form a motion with the recommendation that these, you know, we can state these questions be answered.
You know, I think that there's been some movement in this general area for a little bit of time. There was...I think this Lot 3 was where they just recently had demolished that, like, stone castle-looking property, and I didn't research enough here. So I think one of my suggestions would be that any of, you know, these estates that could be historically relevant at least be made to go through the preservation review process so that we can identify that. That's one of the things that we look at commonly. Without knowing what the plans are, and I think there are plans that we're not privy to, I would wonder if there are zoning changes that are, or re-subdivisions that are planned, and maybe that's something that we would then get another chance to look at this project on, and if that commonly comes after we give the abatement.
So the plan states the site is zones both C and G, I believe. So Grand is known appropriately, but the...in order for a developer to go forward on a long page, it would require some sort of a rezoning or a use variance.
Or a use variance.
Yeah.
And you're anticipating this will be commercial?
Well, they're talking about...she's hoping for a mixed-use development, so I would assume some residential and some commercial.
Is there a proposed zoning in it?
I think they mentioned that the zoning can remain C or G, or that it could entail a rezoning or a use variance.
It may require rezoning to allow commercial uses along page avenue. So if it wraps around the corner and commercial continues there, then it looks like there would be a rezoning.
And there are no design standards that they have to...
Yeah, these are the...
Besides that, I mean, yeah.
I think it's going to be tough for us to rewrite the design standards.
Yeah, no.
I think it would be cool to have them rewritten and brought back to the committee. I don't know if that's in our purview or not.
What if we made a...
Take it up next time.
No. What if we said that we requested them to work with the planning department to, I don't know, give them the word, to apply a...
Yeah, the planning department's leaving town here pretty soon.
Yeah. It really all depends on what's proposed there. You know what? If there's a gas station proposed to go there...
It seems like it, though, right?
It really doesn't matter.
It's going to be a Crown Mart with a little...
I don't know what it is, but then, you know, what planning provisions would you...
You wouldn't. You just wouldn't give a bunch of money on it. You know, they would just pay the taxes, like most of the Crown Marts do.
Correct.
We don't really give abatement for most of the gas stations, do we?
Half of them.
Seen a lot of them through here.
Yeah, a lot of them. Yeah. So a couple of things is, okay, so the boilerplate is a little old and stale. We want to take a stab at that over time, fixing that. But tonight, we want to say something that would help LCR either interpret them when they get to the RFP stage, or actually change them in the document with some wording like...
Prohibition stations.
Yeah, prohibited uses. Isn't that what we didn't loop to?
There's lots of them in the loop. I'm not sure I'd have them all in there today, but there are a lot of them.
Right. No tattoo parlors?
Yeah.
Yeah, that is...
No drive-through restaurants, no gas stations, no car repair shops, you know.
Sure. I'm fine with passing it as it is, to be honest with you all.
And because there's...it hasn't been reviewed, I mean, the redevelopment plan can still change.
Between, yeah.
I mean, having a review, we can leave it in the...
Yeah.
Because it's so speculative, we really have no idea what might happen.
Yeah. Yeah, so the big win would be actually if we upgraded the standards as they're applied throughout the city in the future.
Right.
That'd be the big win.
Right.
What happens in this site might...
So remember...
Really, if everyone is saying it was custom.
Yeah. One would love if everyone was be custom. They're not going to have everyone being custom, so the generic is important, and then the special cases that needs additional time. So I think Michael's offering to take what he's heard tonight, to work with the Alderman, because it hasn't been introduced, which is even nicer, to hear that there was discussion of the Planning Commission, to make some improvements upon it and work interactively.
And I think one of the important things would be to clarify the status of the appeal that was heard for the strip shopping center and the status of the conditional use permit application for the construction of a new gas station, because it's unclear as to whether those were approved or what their status is.
So those are still out there and...
The two signs were out there, yeah. But it sounds like Alderman Davis doesn't support that conditional use permit for the gas station.
Right. We have seen their plan.
And there's no expectations from Crown that they're going to get a...
Do they think it what?
That they're going to get 15 years tax abatement. We don't know that, but I don't know if there's anything...
There is a plan.
We know they have. We're just playing clue here.
Right.
Yeah. So...
Can I just comment? We will review that the template or the standard and ensure that it's followed today. But I don't think that, given that we don't know what's going to happen in this case on this lot, that we want to play it as a...I think we will work with the Alderman and what, you know, if it's by anyone else, we want to have input to it to try.
So the one thing I'll say, and, you know, it's a two martini deal later, is that... is, of course, geography's different, but the idea is, Alders, of course, is that we don't want to just be reactionary to what somebody comes in, we want to help drive the ship a little bit.
Yeah. And that's a lot of what this is about. We also don't suddenly want to see a Crown gas station given, you know, which represents sort of a less desirable development on Grand, given 15 years of tax abatement, when the mentality of spending was really to get a higher level of...
High level of use. High level of use or a higher level of design, we're removing the blight. So we want to remove the blight with a use that's compatible with the situation, and appropriate for the neighborhood, and we want the design to be of the highest quality possible in this area.
Move to approve? Begging. Any other further comments? I think we need to follow the law, I guess.
Alderman Cruisin. Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Upstate.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Space.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
And Commissioner Allen. And this is passes with all but one present voting yes and one abstaining. Thank you, members of the commission. I will tell you that the informational item to be discussed, you'll find interesting, but quite detailed, and Dick has two tasks. One, this informational item is something he's working on, and two, he tracks what's going to be on the Planning Commission agenda, and he's told me that as best we know at the moment, the December meeting is quite light, and we're welcome, and we'd certainly be willing to move item number six to the December meeting.
How do we feel about that?
I think we're excited about this one.
And there will be people there at the meeting, right? So if we take that up first, people can see that action item.
Yeah. We will send you the PowerPoint.
That'd be great.
We'll send you the PowerPoint. To tell you the truth, it was going to be a lot to digest, and it was going to be, therefore, a little bit like this, but we'll send you the PowerPoint. We anticipate not to have a lot on the December agenda. I'll apologize if it ends up being a huge one, but it's all indications it's going to be a relatively light one, and then we'll do this with fairness to all the work that Dick's put into it.
Do you need a motion for that, Bun, or can you...
It's an informational item, so I think no.
Delegated items, any questions? Anything, Bun, on the delegated item list on the Chapter 99?
Oh, we've had so much fun with Chapter 99 tonight.
Yeah, we've had our quota.
Sometimes they're actually exciting projects that occur that, you know...
Yeah, small projects are the most exciting.
There was none over $1 million.
Yeah, so I'm...well, and I define excitement in different ways. One is that the redevelopment is for an area, not a single site, and...
Yeah. We have no need for a closed session, right?
Not today.
Thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful contribution tonight. Moving adjournment?
Begging.
On favor?
Aye.
So just now, David wouldn't mind turning off the recording.